Delay, everyone. We were forecasting.
Zach, you ready back there?
Okay. It being a little bit past seven, I call the meeting to order.
So moved.
Can I have a sec, uh, acceptance of the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second, Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Okay, we'll start with the walk-in period. Are there any walk-ins?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bangor.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Al Bangor, Director of Public Works, and I just want to give you just a quick heads up on the fact that we're all ready for winter. We are prepared, all the roots are laid out, we have increased the number of town employees and town vehicles involved in the snow fighting effort this year once again. At this point, the water, sewer, highway, grounds, and transfer station departments will all be involved in snow plowing. Uh, the, uh, we're going to go to a new mix this year. We're going to continue to do the pre-application of salt brine before the storm hits, and then we're going to go to a straight-salt mix, uh, following, as, as then we go out with our machinery. Uh, this means we won't be using a blend of sand and salt, we'll be going with straight-salt, which will greatly improve spring cleanup, and it will actually be more effective on the highways than the salt-sand mix that we had in the past. One of the things driving it is that, um, with the new federal standards coming along, cleanup of streets, the need to sweep, the frequencies of cleaning streets, catch basins, et cetera, uh, is putting more and more pressure on not using things such as sand. So, salt is more expensive than sand, but, uh, Kevin Cafferty, the town engineer, negotiated with our salt supplier and was able to reduce the price of our salt from sixty dollars to forty-eight dollars a ton. So we've got a significant savings in salt, so we're looking at a very good operation there.
What does sand cost? What does sand cost?
About eleven bucks.
Oh, about eleven bucks.
So it's five times more expensive?
Yeah, but we won't use, we don't replace, uh, sand, ton for ton, with salt, okay? So if we were putting down a hundred tons of the mix, we may very well put down only fifty tons of salt, okay? Because we're using a one-third salt, two-thirds sand. Result is, uh, sand can actually be deleterious as, as time goes on, because what you do is you get a slurry on the road, instead of getting some grit action, you actually get a slurry action and, and have trouble. So, uh, we're moving in that direction.
Plus, there's a cost for cleaning it up in the spring and the summer.
Absolutely. In fact, uh, Mr. Danny, as you point out, the, the cost of cleaning it up is great, and therefore it ties up the sand, the, uh, street sweeper excessively, because at least one-third of the amount of time of street sweeping is going to empty the street sweeper. So if we're, in fact, sweeping up less material, we can move down the roads and cover many more roads in a given, uh, sweeping day. In addition, uh, we have to now pay to get rid of what we sweep up. Used to be, we could dump it, and now, because of federal requirements, we have to dispose of it in a, in a, in a different manner. So we're paying to get rid of it. So we're paying to bring it in, we're paying to get rid of it, we're paying to sweep it up, and it's not as effective as salt. The other factor this means is that, uh, we're going to have, uh, we're going to have to have more salt in town. Our salt barn is not large enough to keep us through, uh, one and a half storms. So, we're going to be using, um, Egypt Beach Parking Lot as a salt storage area. So we will have a pile of salt there, it'll be tarped, we'll have some security in that area, so that we're, we're not afraid of, uh, walking away from us. Uh, but, that will enable us to get through any kind of si- storm situation without worrying about the salt supply, which in past winters has been a bit of a problem. The last thing I'd mention is that the transfer station, since we're involved, we got the big equipment at the transfer station we put on the roads to help with cleanup. Uh, the transfer station in the heaviest storms, we will close. Now, of course, during a heavy storm, people shouldn't be out anyway. And where we can, we'll maintain a skeleton crew, so if there are some incidental people showing up, that they'll be able to get in, provided we've, we've, uh, cleared the transfer station of snow. But that's not our first priority. Our first priority is to be on the streets, clearing the streets, so people can get to the transfer station and other places in town, okay?
And that's not, that's not a snow day, that means while it's snowing.
While we're snow fighting, right.
So, eventually, you know, it, it's usually blocks of time of...
Yeah, usually eight, eight or ten hours.
So it's more of a delay as opposed to a closing.
Correct. And many times, we're doing, most of the work is in the middle of the night, and so that's when, uh, we're generally snow fighting, and then, sometimes storms go on and on and on, we have to keep at it. If that's the case, then, on that day, you'll know that it's a bad day, because no one would be out anyway.
John?
Yeah, on another note, I just wanted to say, thanks to the groundskeepers, you know, the crew, uh, they've been doing a wonderful job. Saw them today, over cleaning up around, uh, playground equipment. Last week, I saw them at the high school, uh, picking up, and of course, two weeks ago, I saw them at the commons, so, you know, thank them, you know, it's, it's a thankless job, but I mean, they're out there, and they're doing a very good job, so it's noticed, believe it or not.
Al, one more question. Did the, the ratio of, of town vehicles to contracted vehicles, does that continue to go down?
Yes, it has.
So, and as you've passed...
As, as we've been able to get, uh, bigger, better equipment, and as we've been able to train our crews and cross rough everybody, uh, we now have, um, all of our large equipment will be, all of our new large equipment will be out with better equipped plows and sanding equipment.
And it's just much less expensive?
Much less expensive.
Great, thank you, Al.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, thanks, Kevin. Um, any other walk-ins? Okay, we'll move on to item number three, which is a notice of public hearing, uh, Town of Citro property setting, uh, the residential factor and tax classification hearing.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On behalf of the Board of Assessors this evening, I'm Brian Sullivan, the chairman of the Board of Assessors. With me is Steve Jarzombowski, the assessor, as I'm sure you know, Steve, he's been to Town Hall for a couple of years now, and, uh, we're here to...
Brian, just one second, just want to introduce the other, you guys don't get much FaceTime, so the other people that put in the work...
With good reason, but, uh, thank you. There's, uh, I apologize, there's, uh, Mr. Fred Avila to my right and to your left, and behind me is Mr. Steve Gard.
Right, the three assessors.
Thank you very much. Anyway, uh, the Board of Assessors this evening, uh, again, uh, renew our request to the board that, uh, that the board accept the, uh, single tax rate, this is a factor of one, versus a split tax rate between residential and commercial, which will be a factor of two. So we're recommending a factor of one, which should be the same rate across the board for both residential and commercial property. It's the way it's always been, and it's the way that, uh, that most towns, uh, on the South Shore set their taxes, and we've explained in the past why that is, and we're happy to...
If you just want to tell the people watching the percentage between the two?
Sure. Um, the, um, the, the commercial, uh, assessment, the average commercial assessment is about six-hundred-eighty-eight thousand dollars, the average residential assessment is about, um, four-hundred-seventy-eight thousand dollars, and, uh, if there were a split tax rate, it, what would happen is that the, the homeowner would realize a savings of about fourteen dollars, but the commercial businesses in town would end up paying about four-hundred-twenty-seven dollars more. And of course, they're in a for-profit business, they're going to pass that on to the consumers, so...
My point was more the percentage of residential to percentage of, you know, it's ninety, what is it, Steve?
Ninety-six percent.
Ninety-six percent is residential.
It's, it's been that way for...
So in towns like Braintree or other big commercial towns, it'd be, have a much bigger impact than our town of...
Yeah, you know, if, if, uh, you know, even Foxborough with Sullivan Stadium, or whatever it's called now, Gillette Stadium, is, um, that's still, it's still a factor of one, although if that casino's built, that might, might have to change, because it would be such a large percentage would be commercial, that they might have to have a factor of two, but even, even Foxborough is still a factor of one. So unless we build a casino in Citrus, so...
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Now you're thinking.
Uh, do you need a motion for the classification of one?
It moves to the Board of Selectmen vote to classify all the property of the town of Citrus at one.
Second.
Second, Mr. Danny, for discussion?
Yeah, but...
Okay. Any discussion from the board?
No.
Yes, sir?
I have a question.
Yep, if you come up and tell us your name and where you live.
Yeah.
You can pull the mic right over there, so you don't have to lean over.
Joe Gibbons, two-two-three Gannett Road. I just wanted to ask the selectman and the administrator, what percentage the recent override, um, what percentage of the tax rate is directly attributable to the override that was passed last year?
Well, the, uh, the previous tax rate for fiscal year two thousand and eleven was eleven dollars, twenty-five cents per thousand, and the new tax rate will be going up to twelve dollars, thirty-four cents per thousand. And just in terms of where that puts us, we're still the lowest on the South Shore. Um, we're just about the lowest, we're one of the lowest. They've got the, uh, tax rates, fiscal year two thousand and ten, Braintree was, which again is a factor two, Braintree was nine-sixty-seven per thousand, but just about every other town on the South Shore was below where we were, and that, that remains the case. And in terms of the split, Steve?
I, I can, uh, as a jealous question, um, without the override, the numbers that we looked at were approximately eleven-sixty-eight per thousand.
So that would mean that, um, sixty-six cents about is the override portion of our tax rate?
So the effect, the, the effect on the typical homeowner, a property that's assessed at five-hundred-thousand dollars, what, what are we talking in, in tax dollars? We're talking, uh...
Five-hundred times about sixty-five cents?
Yeah.
Three-hundred and something like that.
Three-hundred dollars here, three-twenty-five.
Okay, so about three-hundred dollars of that increase that a lot of people are going to see are directly attributable to an operational override that was passed this past year?
Yes.
And, and in this town, in this town, we have aging buildings. We just passed an operational override that is going to be with us ad infinitum, and at the expense of taking care of buildings like the Town Hall, the junior high, that in my opinion have been neglected for years, and we passed an operational override.
Yeah, well, Joe, obviously, we can't undo time, that, that's done, and if you, if you, no, let me finish, let me finish.
Right, but going forward, I'm a student of history.
Yep, let me finish. Part of the override that's going to occur, the selectmen and the board here, is that has allocated almost five-hundred-thousand dollars of that override to improving the roads, the buildings, the seawalls of town.
Yeah, I understand that, and I agree with that, but I think your, your, your problem there is, wouldn't it have been better to do that as a dead exclusion, where you pay it off in five years or ten years, and you're not stuck with it, and override is with us forever?
Yes. Yes. It's, it's a little, I've let you go on, even though it's off-topic of what we're talking about here, but, but...
I don't think it is.
Well, I do. So, but, so where do you want to, where do you want to go with this? What's, what's your question?
My question is, I, I'm looking, I, I'm, people are looking at, are going to be looking at tax bills, okay? And they're going to see that an override was just passed, and that three-hundred dollars is going to the override. Yet, in the last five years here, we have not increased the overlay one dollar. If you go back to fiscal oh-six, since fiscal oh-six, the overlay's been two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars.
Okay?
Okay? When you have overrides, you get more appeals. When you get more appeals, you need more in the allowance for abatements and exemptions to cover those appeals, and I think it's very important that the public and the Board of Selectmen understand that the assessor's job is very difficult in that regard. That overlay is staying at two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, yet, I can guarantee you, you're going to get more appeals this year than, than you have, be, because you pa, because we passed an operational override.
Right, that, I mean, that's your assumption, and unfortunately, that's not actually accurate. The over, the overlay is going down this year in our fis- fiscal year two thousand and thirteen budget. So, the amount of appeals and the overlay, uh, money that we've put in has been more than enough to cover, um, the, the appeals that come before the town.
But that's not the point, the, the point, there should be more in there going forward when you pass an override.
The financial, the financial team looks at it and figures out what the accurate number is for this, the assessor is involved in it, the town administrator's involved with it, and we come up with a number, and we've been pretty good for the last three-hundred-and-seventy-five years.
And can I ask, what is that proposed num, what is that proposed number for the allowance for abatements and exemptions that's going to go on the recap sheet?
For what year?
For fiscal twelve.
It's two-fifty for twelve. For thirteen, it'll probably go down a little bit, in the forecast.
Okay. That answers my question.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. As you were.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Gibbons. He is correct that it's not an easy job being an assessor, but, uh, we're, I think we're very fortunate to have Steve, who's right on top of things, and, uh, and despite the fact that, you know, frequently, we get abatement applications, our record in front of the appellate tax board is, is remarkable, and that we rarely, if ever, lose, because we do things right.
That's good to know, and Tricia says that all the time, that we have one of the best assessors in the state working for us, so, great job, Steve.
We get a motion.
Is there, do we need another motion, are we done?
We did, we did the motion.
Oh, oh, we never, I got you. All right, thanks. So, will we let, uh, so we have a second, a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? It's unanimous, four-zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for coming in.
Happy holidays. Happy Christmas to you all.
Okay, we'll move on to item number four, which is a continuation of, um, an item we talked about last week, um, with an emergency sewer hookup. Our hopes was that you wouldn't be before us right now. Um, I think the way we left it was that, um, that you would try and get some sort of resolution with, uh, the DPW department and not have to come back before us, but I assume that that hasn't been done yet, so here we are.
Well, I'll give you the update, what's happened since last week. The DPW was able to meet with me yesterday on this project, um, and I did meet with them, I think we have come to resolution. Basically, what we did is we analyzed the three different options for connection of the property, twenty-seventh Captain Pierce Road, um, and the alternative that is, uh, I'll let Al speak, but the alternative that is supported by the DPW is running our own private spaghetti line in excess of five-hundred feet up the edge of Captain Pierce Road, bypassing the bound system, bypassing Carnsleya, and tying into the sewer manhole up on Tilden Road. Um, it appears that we can do a majority of the work outside of the pavement, within the right-of-way, but outside the pavement. There is a portion where we will be within the pavement as we go around the Carnsleya Lane intersection, and then as we're cutting into Tilden Road to access that manhole. Um, I guess the second reason why we're here is to get permission from the selectmen to do this work as expeditiously as possible, as we're beyond the street opening permit deadline. Um, you know, I still, I still believe the weather is in our favor, and that we can still get asphalt and repair the roads sufficiently where we are cutting into it to perform this work.
Um, I, I just may be a little naive, what are you digging into going up Captain Pierce if it's not the asphalt?
Oh, it, it is the asphalt, um, in two locations. It's, when we, when we're coming up Captain Pierce...
Right, right there, what are you digging into? Before, I understand when you cross the street, you are, but what do you...
Prior to the house right there.
Oh, they're right in here?
Yeah.
Outside the asphalt, there's probably an eight-foot grass strip, you know, before you get to the edge of the road.
So you're going up the grass strip in front of everybody, everybody's house?
Exactly, and we're, we end up cutting across, uh, one, two, three, four private driveways as, as well as a result of this.
Well, you got to remember, the, the center of the road, the roadway itself, in and of itself, is not the layout of the road. It's, it's beyond that, it's, I, I forgot the exact terminology, but it's like, so, in other words, they're going in the town right-of-way, and so, that's what you're cutting into. It's not private property, you're not going in anybody's private property's rights, their, their driveways go over the public way.
Sean?
My only concern is, when, how quick could this start? Because we've been so fortunate with the weather, it's going to turn any day. Do we, Jennifer, do you know that? If, if, you know, if everyone's on board?
Weather's no...
No, no. When can, when can the contract start?
It's already dig-safe, so...
Okay.
Yeah, it's already been marked out, um, as far as, I know Pete Spencer is going to be doing the work for the homeowner, and he's basically awaiting a rule to begin, so I expect it'll be either later this week, or beginning next week. In meeting with DPW yesterday, I think we've agreed that in the areas within the, the street pavement, you know, we'll pave those, we'll, we'll be responsible during the construction of the line for any plowing of the disturbed area during construction of that. So I think, I think there is potential to get it in, hopefully, before this weather turns bad.
Joe wants to ask you a question about the betterment.
The betterment, uh, you reached agreement on that eighteen thousand or whatever?
Well, the client, the, the client is willing to, their client is clearly willing to pay that, the, uh, willing to talk later about how that's executed, there's, there's some issues around betterments that I, I think we might be better to stay away from the whole betterment area, we've not applied betterments, uh, to this kind of situation in the past. It's, uh, the use of a betterment isn't really applicable here, because we're not doing the work, we're not creating a betterment.
So you're saying that we're not charging, uh, in this situation, the same thing that we charge the people on Cap...
So go for the town, because the town's not doing the construction. You know, a betterment is when the town, uh, you can, you can elect to establish a fee, str, a fee, okay? But a betterment, very specifically, is when town does work and betters a specific property, then the town recovers its costs. In this case, the town is not involved in the construction at all.
But the town is allowed in, in, that, involved in allowing...
Yes.
...tie-in, which...
There's a fee there, though, right?
Yes.
There's a fee, how much is that fee?
Whatever.
What is, I mean, is it...
Well, there, there...
Does anyone ever pay that fee?
There's a five-thousand-dollar fee to connect to the sewer.
Okay.
Okay? Um, there is a minor fee, a hundred-and-twenty-five, to do the, to open the road, if they open a road that's been, a moratorium road, there's an additional five-thousand dollars for that, that we're going to, we prefer, or they would prefer to avoid going through a recently paved street. Um, and then there's the cost of the actual E-one pump, which is probably, right, what, two-thousand dollars for the pump, the pump installation of the property, and then the installation of that is another couple thousand dollars, and then going up the street is, what, five, six, eight thousand dollars? This, this total connection here, we're expecting the homeowner to spend about thirty-thousand dollars on this connection, uh, and that, you know, that includes the five-thousand-dollar connection fee for the manhole of Tilden Road.
Thank you, thank you.
I only have one question. Why, why is it that, um, we're having the spaghetti line go all the way up to, um, Tilden, when Carnsleya, the, the, the actual sewer's connected there and, and then turns right up Pierce Road, right? Why, why would you go that way?
Yes, there are several other connections on, on that street, private lines put in already. Um, Carnsley was put in as a betterment, paid for by the people on Carnsley's, Rosalina, and Newfield, they've all, they have paid for all of that work from the intersection on down, that betterment was applied to their properties. Uh, there's, you know, the, uh, the, the DPW line that was put in there that we've had some problems with, it's a private line, it's not a public line, in other words, we don't have public sewage on that street. We're not declaring, because the Carnsley line is, is not a public line.
So in other words, in the reason is, I'm just asking, because it makes better, it seems to make sense that if you're going to tap in, why would you go further and have basically two sister lines going side by side, as opposed to connecting it? Is it because if you connect it to Carnsleya, that, or Carnsley, what, how do you say it? Carnsley, Carnsleya?
Carnsley.
Carnsley. In other words, that, um, then everybody else along the way would then be able to say, we're going to tap into it, and then get the benefit of, of saying there's a...
Oh, they weren't, it was paid for by the people.
Betterment, and then they could, they could use the, the statute to, the statute to be able to do it.
Exactly.
But if you keep a spaghetti line, then, I got you, all right, so that makes sense.
And the spaghetti line, what happens with the spaghetti line is that the spaghetti line remains, pains of, remains a private line, and it's a responsibility of the homeowner to maintain, as opposed to, when it becomes public sewage, then the town takes over responsibility for maintenance of it.
Let, let me ask you this, and I'm sorry, it's just kind of fun to deal with this. Assume for the sake of argument, God bless, that you're going to go in another five or ten years, that we make it a public sewer, and we do a betterment right down, um, Captain Pierce, all the way down to the, um, DPW, then you're still going to have these spaghetti lines there, with stubs out there, people will be charged the betterment towards it, whether they connect or not, it's up to them.
Here's what happens, and this happened in the Carnsley area, there was a homeowner on the corner of Carnsley and Rosa's Lane who had a failed system. The homeowner, uh, got permission for emergency connection up through several backyards and into Tilden, to the, to the Tilden line. That, uh, that homeowner got permission to do that, uh, promptly sold the house, and then the new homeowner did the installation. Uh, five years expire, and now we come along and finally put in this, uh, s, this section of sewage for these, for these people permitted by the DEP, and, and we credited the homeowner with the private line for the sewer connection.
Gotcha, okay.
And we provided him a new pump, I think.
That's fair.
So, that, that is historically what's happened, when sewage comes to an area, uh, there's also several areas up on Hadley that have private sewage put in for emergency reasons in the past, they will get credited for their sewer connection.
Okay.
It's the same as, if you put in, as has happened in mine, and a number of homes along Hadley have put in recently Title V systems, paid much money for Title V systems, now the sewer comes along, you know, they're, uh...
Some credit allowed?
Well, they're not credited, they're, uh, they're...
Out of luck.
Yeah, out of luck.
Okay.
So...
Al, wasn't there a house in vinyl a couple of years ago that falls under the same category? We gave it emergency and...
Yes, and it pumped up the hill, and I think it was sold too.
Two days later, the sign went up for sale, yeah. Thank you.
It happens very often.
Sean?
Wouldn't it be, you know, from what John said, wouldn't it be a better installation if it did tie in to Carnsley, at the intersection of Carnsley and Captain Pierce? Um, and then, and I agree, something would have to be done with that homeowner, they're going to save some money, but they would, you know, they rightfully should, so, should somehow pay into something to help those other twenty-seven homes that had to pay. I just think, down the road, it's, Al, it's got to be a cleaner job just to tie into that, if it could, no?
Not necessarily, that, that system was designed for those homes...
Right.
...all the cost, including the cost of paving the streets, um, and fixing a couple of drainage areas, who was paid for by those...
Oh, right, I, I remember.
Right, and then, uh, those costs are, those actual costs are divided up by the number of homeowners, and assessed to the homeowners, some have paid their betterment already and moved.
Right, right.
Uh, a couple have moved, some have paid their betterment, some have put their betterment over the twenty-year period. Okay, so now, to, the law doesn't allow us to collect a betterment in this situation unless we've done the work, but then how do we reimburse the people who pay, you know...
Yeah, you couldn't, yeah, yeah, that would, that part would be, but...
Right.
Construction-wise, I, all right, it's, that's fine, it's, gets it done.
It's, it's, it's our, it's the DPW's preferred method, and then eventually, when sewage comes in this area...
Right.
Guess what? It doesn't even go in that direction, it all goes downhill.
Right, goes reverses, right.
The railroad tracks, connects to the railroad tracks and heads on out, so...
Right.
So if the DPW did the work and connected it to Carnsley, could they assess the full betterment, or would it only be the cost of getting it to that spot?
Well, we would assess the betterment, then we would need to reimburse all the, uh, people on the streets, because they paid the betterment. See, they paid, this is their line, if you look at it, they paid for everything from Tilden...
He's talking, he's talking about, forget Carnsley, he's talking about on, on, on Captain Pierce. Pierce. If you connect Captain Pierce all the way down to the tracks where the pipe is, and could we assess an a betterment for everybody on Captain Pierce?
Yes.
Well, I assume...
There's a lot of permitting issues to go to.
Well, I assume that there's a sewer on Tilden, right?
There's a sewer to that manhead on Tilden.
And somebody, somebody paid a betterment to put that in, right?
It's a gravity line that gets that way, yeah.
But somebody paid a betterment.
Years ago, twenty years ago.
Right, twenty years ago, and then we, Carnsley tapped into that, right?
Yeah.
So those people didn't, we didn't refund the other houses the betterment that...
Well, that was likely, yeah, after, after the betterment expires, there's, there's no, I don't know how that plan was put into the betterment.
I don't recall. I thought that was done with, years ago, in the seventies, with Justinio, with Geneva Construction, when they did Egypt Beach area. Joe, no?
I don't remember.
I, but, it was a while ago.
Well, I don't know, we're...
I think the one thing that they, they need to ask permission for is that the, there's now a moratorium on opening streets. The, literally, the plant, the, the last paving plants are shutting down. There's one that's left over for emergency purposes. So we cut off opening streets from November fifteenth to April fifteenth.
Right.
Okay? And we get a lot of pressure to allow us to open, to let me open the street, there's one more thing I need to do, one more thing we need to do, and we do that for emergencies such as the gas line leaks that have happened on, the gas company found out on Brook Street. And we understand the urgency of the, Mr. Morris's client here to get this project put in place, and we said that if, he would have to ask for an exception from you for the street opening moratorium, and that we would go along with that.
Sorry.
Motion for that?
So, well, why don't we have, sure, go ahead.
Move that the, the board make an exception in this, in this case, for a street opening permit.
Second. Second. Second by Mr. Danny, further discussion? So, obviously, the other alternative is just to tell these people to wait until April and have them pump, they pumped it every two months, they could pump it every two months until then and do it the other way. Now, I guess my question is, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting, my question is, if in April, we ask them to do that, we say, okay, get through the next six months, are you gonna do the same thing? Are you gonna tell them to take a spaghetti line and hook it up to...
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
Okay, so, so it doesn't matter.
I just have one question. And this, this might have been answered at the last meeting. The urgency is the sewage coming up, backing up into the house, and...
Into the house.
That's the urgency. And one, one final question. Has anyone from the town, Jennifer, seen the sewage backing up into the house?
No.
I walked over it, it's very soggy.
So, so you've seen sewage tracking the house?
Yeah, no, I didn't go in the house. I did, went out into the, you know...
The yard is a mess.
Where you see in the picture, the yard is soggy, like any, I'm sure we've all walked through a cesspool.
Okay.
Unfortunately, no. The, I guess the, the other question I have is, is that even an option? If we say, look, pump it every month, is that still putting them at risk of sewage going in there, or if they did it every month, it wouldn't be a problem?
You can't, you can't tell when it's gonna back up. It's a function of the weather and the water use.
Right.
If you get a bad rain, then the rain's using the space rather than the sewage, and...
Right. Okay. And, John?
Just, how soon can Pete get started? Before the holidays? I mean, I'm asking that because I'm like, you know, it seems like the weather will turn within a week or two, or sometimes right after Christmas, so it's like, you know, if he can get started sooner, the better, and I'd like to be able to say, put it in limitation to have it done before Christmas. Not to try to hamstring it, but at least to try to tell Pete, get started on it, because it's important.
I think that would be fine, I know what's, it's on the agenda for as soon as possible.
Sean, did you have anything, or?
Nope.
Any further discussion? So we're all kind of in favor of...
Kind of.
All right, so no, okay, if, if we are, so you don't need, so we need to vote, we are, so we started to vote to open up the road, do we also need to vote to assess the fee, or that just happens automatically?
Yeah.
So all we have to do is vote to allow them to open up the road, and then it's a done deal?
I believe you voted last time, you intended to allow emergency connection.
Yep, right. Okay, so I have a, a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I guess? It's unanimous. And one, one quick thing, Kevin. So do we have to vote? I know we did it tentative, we asked, so we do have to vote again? So, so the emergency hookup is fine? Kevin?
I'm still requesting a street opening permit, obviously, so we get the bond in place. We're trying to settle votes.
You'll do that? Thank you, guys?
Excuse me.
Good luck, get it done quickly.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, discussion of the annual license renewals.
Just run down the list, Tony, and then, a motion, run down the list, and then we, yeah, vote.
Before we start on this, this isn't, this isn't the Hawkers Peddlers or the Hawker, no, the...
Hawkers Peddlers.
Hawkers Peddlers.
No.
No, it is not.
Okay, 'cause that, that's gonna come into this whole play, and this is just the CV license, the common vehicle license, and the other ones in town.
The town administrator and I are working to present the license in January, and for peddlers, and then, who will supply for renewals and renew applicants, and we'll take it at that time.
Okay.
Great. Sean, did you want to run through?
I'll start, sure. Will the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following common vehicles licenses for two thousand and twelve? Cecilio's Grotto, Dad's Place, Dribbles, Driftway Donuts, Egypt Country Store, Harbor Donuts, Harbor House of Pizza, Hennessy News, Sam's on the Harbor, Maria's Subs and Pizzas Inc., Mary Lou's News, Morning Glory's Bakery, Reaver's Pizzeria, South Shore Cinemas, The Silent Chef, Wilbur's North.
Second. Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four-zero. The next one? Joe?
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following septic disposal license for two thousand and twelve? All Town Inc., K.I. Anderson Pumping, Joseph Panome III, Rosanna Davis, Senatorie Pumping, P.F. Spencer Junior Inc., and Spireto Environmental Services Inc.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. John?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Class II licenses for two thousand and twelve? Seacrest Auto, Driftway Auto Inc., McBriens Diagnostic Repair, and Automotive Depot.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. The next one, Class III license?
Move that the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the following Class III licenses for two thousand and twelve? Ryan Allen LLC and Ray's Repair Shop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
abstain.
One abstain, that's three-zero with one abstaining?
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the bowling and electronic games licenses for the Satuitt Bowlway for the year two thousand and twelve?
Second.
Second by Mr. Danny, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous, four-zero. And lastly...
Move the Board of Selectmen vote to renew the movie theater license for South Shore Cinema, or Cinemas, for two thousand and twelve?
Second.
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Great. Number six is a discussion of opening the annual town meeting warrant.
Will the Board of Selectmen vote to open the April ninth, two thousand and twelve, annual town meeting warrant at, Shapers, seven forty PM?
Second by Mr. Harris, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous. Let the budget begin, right? The town administrator's report, item number seven.
The town administrator has no report.
No report? She had a large one last week. Next item, item number eight is other business. Does anyone have any other business?
Nope. Two things, unless, are you gonna talk? Saturday? Good. No, the only thing I was gonna say is, you know, many people probably have been driving around the roundabout, and yesterday, I was driving around the roundabout, and to my great surprise, there happened to be a Christmas tree put in the middle of it with red bows, and thought to myself, my goodness, I can't imagine the state of Massachusetts, the highway